Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the July meeting of the Paulding County Planning Commission. This time, I would ask if you have any audible devices, please turn them off or to silence so that they don't interrupt the proceedings of the meeting. We're going to dispense with the reading of how to participate in a public meeting. However, a copy of it is provided either on the back table or just outside the door of the lobby here. If you'd like to take one to read, you're more than welcome to. At this time, I'm going to ask the Planning Commission if you've had an opportunity to review the minutes from the previous session of this body, and if you might have any questions, comments, concerns, or edits. Hearing none, I ask for a motion.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Aston and a second, for Ms. Turnbull, all in favor. Motion passes. Oh, we have an abstention from Mr. Henson, so motion passes five, zero, and two. Just to cover a few basics here, we will go by application based on the agenda. For it to be heard, representative must be present. That representative will have an opportunity to speak. Fifteen minutes will be allotted for anybody speaking on behalf of the application. That includes the applicant and anybody else who wishes subsequently to speak in behalf of it. Fifteen minutes will be allotted to opposition or whether you might have questions, comments, or concerns, so all of those are allotted the same fifteen minutes. If there's going to be more than one speaking, I would ask that you line up orderly to the side of this wall. As you step to the lectern, you will sign in, you will state your name, and you will address your comments to the chair, the chair being me. Again, no questions going out to the audience. Everything directed my way, please. Again, this is a recommending body. We will hear each case that's brought before us. We will make a recommendation at the end of hearing of the case, and it will be forwarded on to the Board of Commissioners' meeting for final consideration. We don't have anything for hiram, do we? So it's all Paulding County Board of Commissioners today. It will be forwarded to their meeting at seven o'clock this evening, if I'm not mistaken. If you have an interest in it, and this includes the applicant, you must be present. But the applicant must be present. If you have any interests, you should be present. At this time, I would ask Mr. Robinson if there's any announcements. Otherwise, bring the first application.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome. First application is 2019-05Z. It's application by Aubrey Tyson to rezonate approximately one acre from A1 agricultural to R2 suburban residential for the purposes of selling in-law lots for the construction of a single-family dwelling. Property is located in landlots 1007, 1024, 1025. It's in District 19, Section 3. It's on the east side of Billy Bullock Road, south of Billy Bullock Extension. It's in Commission Post 2. Staff has received several concerns from joint property owners, and we've also recommended approval, and there's one stipulation on right-of-way for future widening, if that happens. An applicant is present.
The applicant, please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
My name is Aubrey Tyson, and the reason that we want to sell those properties to our in-laws is to have them closer, to help care for them during their elder years. We've experienced some stuff with our other family members that wanted us to have them closer, and I'm okay with the right-of-way adjustment.
Thank you for answering that question. If you would please remain there while I see if there's any questions for you.
Okay.
Any questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant? Is there any questions from the Board of Commissioners to the applicant? Ms. Tyson, thank you for your time. You can take your seat.
Thank you.
One point of clarification, the applicant may use all of their fifteen minutes or may save some for rebuttal if that case is need-be. Just anybody having that question. Questions from the Board of Commissioners or from the Planning Commission do not count against either side's time. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone on behalf of?
No.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Please come to the lectern, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the
Yes, sir. My question about it is...
Sir, would you say your name first, please?
Art Abercrombie, and I live at 338 Billy Bullock Road Extension, which is just adjacent to this property. We've lived there for thirty-five years and own supposedly a county-maintained road. That road has fifty-six potholes in it in three-tenths of a mile. And they keep patching it, but they never pay. My concern is, one, we're going to put another driveway on that road to cause more traffic on it, and it's already... My wife's in a wheelchair, and we have a handicap van, and it gets beat up every time we go up and down that road. There's not a person in here on the board or anywhere else in here that would have this kind of road in front of their house. Also, my concern is that I live on ten acres of land with over a three-thousand-square-foot home. I don't know what size home they're going to build on this piece of property, but if it's going to be a small house, it's going to bring down the property value of not only my home, but the other homes that are there. Every house in that area is over three thousand square feet. And I'm concerned about the property values and the long-term effects of it if I decide to sell my property or my house. Also, if they're only going to build that one home there on that fifteen acres, why are they putting it all the way back in the back corner? If they want to be close to their in-laws, that's where they're putting it, is almost a quarter of a mile from their in-laws through the woods. And if they come around on the road, it's over a quarter of a mile. If they want them close, they've got plenty of room right next to the house they've already built on the road to sell. That's all.
Can I ask you one question before you sit down, Mr. Abercrombie? And this is not to get into, you know, a personal discussion with you, but have you called and notified the county DOT of the conditions of the road?
Numerous times and taken pictures to them.
Well, it is noted for the record at this time. I'm sure that they will look at it. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak in opposition? Yes, ma'am. If you'd sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jody Michael. I live right adjacent to the property, actually right out my front door. You'd be able to look directly into the backyard of the proposed site that they're talking of. Our concern, on behalf of me and my family, is the fact that we all live on wells. There's no septic or sewer systems or anything out there, public water. And so we're concerned with it being six other houses in that area that we're all pulling from wells on, that we're concerned about that, about resources. We already almost daily run our well dry, just based on like dishwashers and, you know, doing our clothes and cooking and just different things. We have to, you know, really conserve water. And then another thing is with the septic and sewer, with the way that the proposed site is, is that the sewage and stuff could probably, you know, run downhill. There are houses that are downhill to them that have wells and so forth. One of the houses, for example, already has an issue with water, dirt getting in it from when it rains heavy, you know, just washing into their well system. So it's just a concern for us that the septic tank and the well and the resources.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would wish to speak? Yes, sir?
Can I say something else?
You must come back to the lectern.
Again, my name is Art Abercrombie, and I live just adjacent to this property. And I didn't think about this until Jody said something about the wells. But because of the water situation and the well situation out there, I've had to put an ultraviolet light system on my well because of just what she's talking about runoff from the other houses. And all this is going to do is make it worse. It causes bacteria to get in our water. And I've had to put a filtration system on there to keep the dirt out, too. That's all.
I have a question. How many people are on this road?
Six.
Six.
Six families. Yes, sir. The road's only two-tenths of a mile long.
Is there anyone else? Yes, if you come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the
Yes, sir. Thanks for having me. My name's Chad Bentley. I'm here really to echo the comments of her husband, who couldn't be here, but he... I first wanted to ask a question. The issue here is to grant the rezoning, but as it is currently, she still has the right to build upon her property anywhere she wants. Is that correct?
Customarily, I take all the questions, and I address them at the end, but if you would like to have that as your question, I'll be happy to address it as we move forward.
Okay. Well, I'm going to make my comments based on that assumption. My argument really is for fairness. She would... Or her family would be allowed to build toward the back of her property, but, and I'm just assuming this, that this new property wouldn't be on city water, it would be on well water, which is what my counterparts were talking about. It seems unfair to grant... And again, I'm assuming that by rezoning, that would grant them a significant, possibly tax benefit. If that were true, it seems that the burden of supplying the house with water and electricity and area for sewage would be... Would fall disproportionately to the current residents on the back of the property rather than her property.
Your comments, and you'll forgive me for pointing this out, I didn't want to interrupt you out of respect for you, but it sounds like they would be more appropriate under the speaking on behalf of the applicant.
Yes.
I take that that's your intent?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Well, I've taken your comments to this point. Let me go back to those that wish to speak in opposition.
Okay.
And finish that part, and I will give the applicant or whoever she may choose the opportunity to come back and speak.
Well, I'm sorry. I'm speaking on behalf of her husband.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Who is not here. I just wanted to clarify that.
I understand.
Mr. Michael. Yeah. So again, my point was that if rezoning this would give her a significant tax benefit in the argument of fairness, it doesn't seem fair to the family and I, who are speaking on behalf, that the resources required to supply the house would fall disproportionately on the people who live there in cases of sewer and water than the owner of the property.
Okay.
So that's all I have.
Any further... Thank you, Mr. Bentley.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would wish to speak in opposition? Please come to the lectern, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the
My name is Lori Morgan. I represent the Garner Family Trust. I have property across the road from the proposed zoning request, and I am opposed to this, first of all, because it is a small lot. I'm concerned about the value of my property as well as the resources available to us and the maintenance of the road going to the property. There's a huge pothole right at our driveway, or about three potholes right at the driveway. Had it not been for Mr. Abercrombie, that would still be probably about an eight-foot And again, I'm just concerned about my property value, as the property will soon be sold, and I don't want the property value going down. And if that's... But because it is a small lot, more than likely, it would have to be a small house, which could negatively affect property value of our home. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak in opposition to this application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none. Ms. Tyson, if you would like to come back around. You only used a few seconds of your time, so if there's anything you would like to address again to me.
Yes.
In regard to comments that have been made, you're welcome to do so.
Okay. I can address a lot of the things that they bring up. The road is in poor condition, but there's a lot at the back of the road that recently sold that people will be constructing on soon. It's a twenty-acre lot at the back that is owned by some people that I know very well. Then there are lots of one-acre lots with trailers on them all up and down that road that already impact the value. And in a subdivision, people build three and four thousand square-foot homes on quarter-acre lots in a residential setting. So there's no telling what size house I'm going to build, and we're not going to sell them part of the land next to us because this is a flatter piece of property, and we need a zero entrance because, as I said, they're aging, and we would like for them to have easy access to the home. Oh, and we have had it perk-tested for soil testing.
Soil study done.
Yes.
Let me, if you don't mind, ask you that you understand that, for the benefit of all here, this again is a recommending body as to whether or not your proposed use in rezoning the property would be consistent with the comprehensive plan of Paulding County and the future land use map.
Yes, sir.
And in no wise means from walking out of this meeting or the subsequent meeting with the Board of Commissioners, assuming that it's recommended for approval and subsequently that, assuming they approve it.
Yes.
That you would still have to go through the permitting process, which would dictate where the house can actually sit safely.
Yes, sir.
And where your septic system would have to be placed in order for it to be operational and not impact negatively your neighbors' properties.
Yes.
You understand this? So that's not a given that you walk out of the meeting and you can immediately build a home?
Yes. I've already paid the funding so that we can move forward with this procedure. We wanted to reduce it to the one lot because we wanted to reserve the rest of the acreage so that we can file conservation on our existing land. So that's why we only wanted to give them a portion of the land as opposed to all of it, or five acres.
And the house or the home size, the square-foot living area, will be compliant
Yes, sir.
With Paulding County's development standards. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Are there any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission?
What is required square footage in that area?
I believe, I think it's eleven hundred or twelve hundred square foot for Paulding County.
The encyclopedia is standing behind you there.
There was a couple miles up here, if you're okay. I will go ahead and address. Ms. Tyson, with the property currently zoned agricultural, has a right to build a house out there in agricultural district and a residential R2 district. She's applied for the minimal. Home size is eleven hundred square feet heated.
Are there any questions from the Board of Commissioners? No, sir. That part of the meeting has concluded. We're going to be asking questions from the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners. Based on the... Are there any questions from the Board of Commissioners to the applicant?
I do have one more question. One of the people that were against it said, "Why are you doing it in the back portion of your property instead of the front portion where you would be closer to the parents?"
That's what I had addressed previously, that it's a flatter portion of our lot. The portion that's right next to where we live is very sloped, and it would allow them to have a zero entrance for when they age, as they get older, and we may have to have wheelchair access or something like that. It just makes it more convenient.
Both sides of your house sloped that much?
Yes.
Okay.
They're pretty sloped. I'd say it's several-foot drop off the back of our house.
Are there any other questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant? Board of Commissioners, any questions? Thank you, Ms. Tyson.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from the Board... From the Planning Commissions to the staff regarding anything that we've heard or the Board of Commissioners? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion regarding application 2019-05-Z.
Motion to approve with the one stipulation.
I have a motion to approve from Mr. Lowe with the one stipulation. I have a second from Mr. Aston. All in favor? The motion passes six, zero, and one. Again, the application will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners' meeting for consideration tonight at seven o'clock. The applicant must be there. Mr. Robinson.
Okay. Next application is 2019-11Z. Application by Alpha Omega Storeall Management LLC to rezonate approximately 7.936 acres from B1 general business district to B2 highway business district to construct self-storage facility, mini warehouse, to include outdoor storage of vehicles. Property is located in Land Lot 261, District 1, Section 3. It's on the south side of Ridge Road, west of Villarica Highway. It's in Commission Post 2. Staff has received numerous emails, calls, and a petition of six hundred signatures in opposition, and staff has recommended approval with ten printed stipulations. Applicant representative is present.
They would please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments
My name is Ansley Graham. I'm the operations manager with Alpha Omega Storeall. Unfortunately, Tommy Graham was unable to be here, so I think Ron Cobb will be speaking on his back.
How do you do? My name is Ron Cobb. I'm business partner with Mr. Tommy Graham in the Alpha Omega Storeall business. We have five facilities in the general Atlanta area, two in Paulding County and the other is in Cobb and Bartow. Unfortunately, about noon today, Mr. Graham received a call that his father was in the emergency room, and he was going to be here to make his presentation, but he was unable to do so. So we're going to muddle our way through as best we can. I'd like to, again, apologize for Mr. Graham's absence, and I'd like to first introduce Mr. Chuck Rand, who's the engineer who has drawn this project, and he'll go through some of the details and some of the commitments that we've made in accommodating the requests
Good afternoon. I did want to... Typically, there's a question upfront, is whether or not the applicant has reviewed the printed stipulations for the septic zoning request. And I do want to reiterate for the applicant that they have read them, and they are in agreement with those stipulations. Again, this project is 7.936 acres. The request is to go from B1 to B2, and mainly that's in support of the special use application that is subsequent to this request. One thing I do want to note is that all the other B2 uses that are listed outside of the mini warehouse self-storage and outside parking, we are okay with limiting our uses to those B1 categories. Again, it is, it's climate-controlled storage, it is mini warehouse storage, and there is minimal outside parking on the site. And again, this site was originally developed, I believe, back in probably '06, '07-ish time. Got a member of the Halpern team with us today, too, that can speak to a little bit of the history on the site, but we see that there is a need for self-storage in this area. Again, the applicant would not be pursuing this if he didn't feel that there was a need for this in the area. Again, we want to be good neighbors. We want to make certain that the site is maintained in a well and orderly manner. Anyone of you that has ever been to one of Tommy Graham's facilities, Alpha Omega Storage, they're very well-kept, and they are clean. We have additional plantings along the rear of the property, as you can see from the color rendering that we brought with us today, and I've got a large board that I'll flip over here in a second. But again, just looking at it from the standpoint of where we're at, we think it's a... We think there's a need in the community, and again, that's what we're proposing. Again, I'd like to bring a member of Halpern up, if you don't mind, to speak a little bit about the history of the property and the zoning, and then we can reserve the rest of our time to answer any questions from Planning Commission, Board of Commissioners, or any of the citizens that have concerns.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. My name is Daniel Gagne. I'm with Halpern Enterprises, and we acquired this property approximately fourteen years ago, at the same time that we acquired the property across the street where the Publix Shopping Center, known as the Village at New Georgia, now sits. At the time that we acquired this property, we had plans that once the Publix Shopping Center was fully developed and fully leased and all the out parcels were developed, that this would be almost a Phase Two, if you will, of the Village at New Georgia, where we potentially may develop new shops, some out parcels. That was our original plan when we acquired this property fourteen years ago. Unfortunately, the timing of the Publix development coincided with the economy not doing so well, so our shopping center's never really performed to the level that we had hoped that it would. We still have two out parcels in front of Publix that are available for sale or for lease on Ridge Road. We have two out parcels behind the Publix grocery store on Ridge Road that are for sale or for lease. And this property here across the street from Publix, we have absolutely no plans. And Tommy Graham and Ron Cobb's plan to develop this self-storage facility has been the most legitimate proposal that we've received in the fourteen years that we've owned this property. So that's really all. I just want to give you a little bit of history about the property and what we had intended to do with it when we acquired it. So that's all I've got to say at this time.
Thank you.
If I could just close out again. My name is Ron Cobb, and just like to point out that the current zoning B1 on this parcel allows, and it was a plan for sixteen thousand square feet of strip retail plus two out parcels. And our application is to downzone this to one of the lowest-impact businesses in Paulding County. We had a traffic study done of the existing amount, and our maximum traffic impact on this is estimated to be four cars per hour. Just for comparison, the traffic impact, the maximum traffic impact of the daycare facility across the street is eighty-four cars per hour. So we're around five percent of the impact of that. And I just also wanted to show the commission that... This is a few pictures that we've taken of the back of several Paulding County shopping centers. Under the current zoning, with sixteen thousand feet of retail and two out parcels, which could be fast food or otherwise, this is the type of back that will be facing the landowners who are adjacent to us in the rear. And we have committed, in order to avoid this type of impact on the community, we're going to build a facility that is much, much less an impact. And we've also committed for plantings, even though there's already about forty feet of tree buffer at the back of the site, which will be undisturbed, we'll be doing actual additional plantings along there to shield any visibility to the property owners to the rear. So with that, I'll save the rest of my time, if we have some, for comments.
Thank you.
Are there any questions at this time to the applicant or the applicant's representative from the planning commission? I'll have one. The site plan that we're looking at on screen here, this is a proposed site plan, correct?
That is correct.
This is not a final site plan? This is not what is? My question, I guess, more pointedly is, why aren't we looking at a access off of Ridgeway Drive? What was the reasoning in that consideration? I know it's, again, this is a preliminary thing. This is not something that's set in stone.
The access off Ridgeway Drive may for maximizing the site, both in layout and access into and out of the site with left-turn lane present on Ridgeway.
Okay. Are there any questions to the applicant from the planning commission?
Yes. What is the possibility of having the entrance on Ridge Road?
I'll defer to Paulding County DOT with that answer. I don't, I do not believe we would be able to get a full access off of Ridge Road. I'm not going to say we can't, I'm just saying the probability's not high. We'd probably end up with a ride-in, ride-out, is probably all they would grant. But again, I'll defer to Paulding DOT for that.
That's exactly right, Chuck. There's not a spacing between Rayleigh and Ridgeway to get a full access drive in there.
And that's by DOT design standards, correct?
Yes, exactly. To make sure you have adequate spacing so intersections can operate simultaneously and not have traffic conflicting with each other. Are there any further questions to the applicant from the planning commission?
Yeah, and following up with that previous question, what would be the opportunity to come in off of Rayleigh Road?
Rayleigh Road, as it currently sits, is really a substandard road. It doesn't have the full width of asphalt, although it's pretty close. Doesn't have the full width. Again, additional improvements would likely be needed on Ridge Road that would more than likely exceed our ability to afford for the site. Plus, it also does not provide for the same amount of mini warehouse and climate-controlled storage space area on the site. We did look at both. We did our traffic study on Ridgeway Drive.
Not at this time, ma'am. If you hold on.
As far as vehicles, Chuck, would this be used as a U-Haul facility, or is that a possibility, or what kind of vehicles are you talking about storing there?
On the western, eastern side of the property, along this area, you'd have the possibility of having recreational vehicles or an RV. The area on the west side of property right here would likely be where there would be the potential for U-Haul, U-Haul trucks. I think, I believe that's a current component of both of the sites in Paulding as it sits right now.
Are there any further questions from the planning commission? Board of Commissioners, any questions?
What's the required buffer on the west side and the south side?
Mr. Robinson.
Mr. Chairman, on this property right here, the required buffer on the south side would be 40 feet. If the property's on B2, it does require a 40-foot, undisturbed, or replanted buffer.
And then the...
The west side, it requires landscape based on development. It's an overlay district. We don't say it's a buffer, we just say it's landscape strip, which requires street trees because it has, it's a adjoining right-of-way and not another property.
Any further questions from the Board of Commissioners? Hearing none, you can reserve the remainder of your time. Again, just so everybody understands, questions from either the planning commission or the Board of Commissioners does not count against either side's time. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Hearing none. Is there anyone that would wish to speak in opposition to this application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? If so, please come to the lectern in an orderly line. And as we have multiple people apparently wishing to speak, if you would, please be mindful of each person behind you. You can either designate one person to speak for all, or you need to be mindful of each person that may be coming up behind you. If you'd sign in, state your name, and then address your comments to the Chair.
Yes, my name's Richard Thomas. I'm a resident of Trace Ridge subdivision. First of all, I'd like to thank you guys for giving us an opportunity to speak. I'm in opposition to this for several reasons, but from a professional standpoint, the proposed storage, I've lived in Paulding County for 30-plus years. We moved out there to Trace Ridge roughly 20 years ago. We moved into the neighborhood, and the vision was, a new vision for New Georgia, which was a community to, would be safe and secure for raising a family. So, everybody looks for that area as that part. It's Mr. Watts and Mr. Osborne, that was their vision when they first developed this property back then. So, I've worked in the security industry for 35 years. I've been commercial security, and one of the things that concerns me is that the reason we moved out to Paulding County was because it's not Atlanta, it's not Cobb County, it's not Gwinnett County, it's none of the urban counties. So, we wanted to move out there for the specific reason of it was our little small-town feel. So, until recently, I'd have never imagined Paulding County being on the news, but we're on the news more often now than we should be, and not for the right reasons. So, but from a professional standpoint, the environment of a storage facility is a base for crime. As a security specialist for 35 years, I've seen an increase in the crimes at these types of establishments. You can't prevent 100% of the crime, I know that. I've been doing it for too long, but there's no reason to give them a starting point. All you need to do is do a simple internet search. Locally, Fox 5 has several stories, starting with November 20th, 2018, goes through a string of burglaries. May 19th of this year, there was two bodies found inside. These are all local, not in Paulding, but these are local stories. So, May 28th, there was 40 break-ins in the facility, and June 6th of this year, there was 44 units broken into. As you can see, that was one source I went to, that was very quick search. But, in an industry that I go through, we have these meetings all the time. These type of establishments are a haven for types of crime. Now, Paulding County, I'm not saying it is yet, but you would have never saw, there was a meth lab in Paulding County either, but you see it every day. So, what I'm trying to get to is, the criminals are getting smarter. They know that they don't want these establishments on their own property because of seizure laws and stuff like that, so they're moving their operations to other locations. You give them these opportunities or bases of opportunity, and you can always find out. You could have pedophiles put up cameras looking at the daycare center. You can have all these different things that go on. I'm not saying Alpha Omega has that issue, but as you can see, the migration of the troubles from other counties, we're absorbing those. So, why give, give the crooks, the criminals, the ability to start this in our community? Like I said, we're a small group, but there's over 600 people in the area that do not see a need for it, so I don't think a need has been proven for there to be established a storage facility. So, and like I said, been doing this for a long time, the world ain't getting any better. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Erin Harper. I also live in the Trace Ridge subdivision, but I've lived on Ridge Road for over 10 years in a different neighborhood. Just to piggyback a little bit on what Anthony said, is, you know, I noticed that Alpha Omega made great care to talk about pains they made to minimize the impact of traffic or environmental impact. That's not, for most of us, not the impact that we are particularly concerned about. We're particularly concerned about crime and the kind of area that it's going to develop into, because most of us are not afraid of the area being developed. We would love to see more shops, we'd love to see more restaurants. I understand we have not, there have not been companies doing that yet, but we would like to see that, and that won't happen if we have a self-storage unit. So, my primary thing I would like to say, and I will be brief, is, you know, thinking about the net benefit to the community. Who does the self-storage facility benefit? It benefits two people. It benefits Alpha Omega and the seller of the land. To the detriment of over 600 people, whose signatures I have in my hand, we do not want this there. It's going to possibly lower our property values, it could possibly bring crime, it is not what we live out here for. Put a restaurant, put another shopping center, but just not this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Stacy Pettman. I'm a 16-year resident of Trace Ridge. I'm also a realtor in the county. When the 60-plus people that have moved into our community, those who've come and gone, we understand that's a commercial lot in the front of our property. We also understand, and have been told what it was going to be, we're not looking to have something with special permitting and changing of the zoning, because we were looking for something as such as the Publix across the street that would benefit our community. We're also, from personal experience, and I've had another realtor come to me, we have people who are not looking, are currently in our subdivision, which is in the south Paulding side of town. We are one of the two biggest and highest-priced developments in the county. They are not looking in our community currently until they know what's happening with this zoning agreement. So, we're already experiencing the lack of activity due to the possibility of this being placed there, as well as when we moved in there, our developers, unbeknownst to us, didn't do, I guess, the right permitting or whatever with the county, so we, it took us aback last month when we found out our subdivision entrance isn't our subdivision entrance, it's a county road, which we maintain, spend thousands of dollars a year keeping that looking nice, which benefits the daycare center as well as our development. From our understanding, you're going to take down our development signs, you're going to take down all of our Leland's. I know you've got a graph to put other stuff up there, but that entrance, if you come out of what we consider our subdivision entrance, is going to come straight out looking into the daycare center. So, when you have trucks of various different sizes, U-Haul rentals, people who aren't experienced, you've got children playing, and the only thing blocking them from the trucks is going to be a chain-link fence. So, just something else to consider. The DOT studies, I thought there was those being done about Rayleigh Road, coming off of Rayleigh Road. Apparently, I'm guessing that wasn't done, as well as, you know, another entrance, but thank you for your time.
And I appreciate your time, and I would like to point out that in Trace Ridge, there's 60 homes. We're talking 20 to $30 million of value. We just got our property taxes, they're finally going up a little bit because values are going up, but is it worth taking a chance to jeopardize the value of these homes and having a 10% or 20% reduction in the value of these homes because of all of the storage facilities being generated out at our entrance? Not across the street, not down a quarter of a mile. We have a storage facility a mile and a half away that's ample to take care of this. B2 is intended originally to be along a high commercial area, and it says that it probably will have some significant impact on the neighborhood. This will have a definite impact on the homes just to the south, right there at the entrance. It will lower the property values, there will be a rise in crime. We have another storage facility nearby, we don't need a storage right at our doorstep. Now, what is the advantage to change to a B2? What good will it do to Paulding if you lose home values, but yet you're getting a little bit of return on storage units? Thank you.
Just so that everyone understands, there's five minutes remaining on time.
And I'll be brief, I appreciate the time. My name is Keith Harper. My wife, Erin, spoke briefly earlier. I could repeat everything that has been said and that will be said, but I just want to make sure we point out the petitions. I know there are physical petitions in this online petition that I started and have sent to the Board. If we ignore everything else, the property values, the crime, everything that has been brought up, we need to think about what the community wants, and it's pretty obvious what the community has to say about this. There are comments on this petition that can be read, and again, I won't go into detail because of the time, but just please consider that. Thank you.
My name is Gerwood Boyd, and I'm a 25-year resident of Paulding County and a business owner. I've worked very hard to be able to afford the house that I have in Trace Ridge, and never really considered that I was not protected. I thought the B1 zoning protected me from anything like this happening. I have a grandchild in the daycare across the street from this. She gets to go out and look at these trucks and all this stuff going on on the playground that is right across the street from this. I don't consider my grandchild safe. I feel like that the county should protect us as homeowners from anything like this. I don't understand why a B1 could be rezoned to B2. I heard something to the effect that it's considered a feeder road. To me, that's just a loophole, and I have to look and question the reasoning for why you would want to develop this property. Why not go to a B2-zoned area and develop this property? Why do you have to do it right in front of a subdivision with 60 homes, close to a half million dollars? And I'm asking the council, I'm asking our councilmen to protect us from this. We don't need this, we don't need the property values to go down, and just the danger that comes along with this type of development.
My name is Laura Spurlock. I'm actually a new homeowner in Trace Ridge, and had we known something like this was in the progress, we probably would have never, ever bought in the neighborhood. So, I'm extremely concerned, as one of the new homeowners in the subdivision, about property values, about crime, about drugs, that sort of thing, and I think unfortunately, a storage unit, with a storage unit comes all of those things. Thank you.
I'm not a resident of Trace Ridge, just live in the New Georgia community. Keep in mind, nothing has been said or recommended by the planning commission that can guarantee that you're not going to affect property values in shopping center or residential if you put this in. If you lose revenue from Publix and the shopping center there, as well as residential property tax, what have you gained by approving a storage unit? Nothing. The county is losing money if you do that. I would just simply say, I'm one of 614 that signed that petition, and I hope you recommend no to the Board. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kathy Reynolds. And I live at 69 Ridgeway Drive. I'm very nervous, so I'll try and get this. If this property goes in, it literally takes out my backyard, comes right up to it, and it takes out the entire area down on the left-hand side where the entrance and the trees are, so I am left wide open. There may be 50 trees... There may be 50 trees, but a lot of those trees are saplings. They are not in an order where you cannot see. Three-quarters of the year, I can see Publix from my own backyard, and that leaves me vulnerable to all that has happened. My property value is going to be the most effective because of this type of building going in, this type of construction, and that's of a huge concern because I face three different areas in that subdivision. For us to even have a new sign or anything, I would have to give up part of my, my land that has a decorative brick wall, plants and things like that, although I would do it for our community. As far as the storage unit, my husband and I owned catering trucks, and we would park them in a storage unit. And we came in and the truck was destroyed by part of the door, and there was an individual living in the storage unit who was breaking into our truck to get food and water and stuff like that. And I've also used another storage building that was broken into three times, and it was an indoor one, but there was still access to it. I'm a special education teacher, I was for 34 and a half years. My concern very much is those innocent children that are staying across the street and what could happen to them. Could a pedophile be there? Could they get a place just to watch those children come and go? So Mr. Halpern and I had a conversation. I moved in at 2005.
Ms. Reynolds, I'm going to hold you for just a minute.
Okay.
And not exacerbate any anxiety that you may have.
I'm hearing a pair, so you'll have to speak loud.
I don't want to make you any more nervous, but I've got to take care of some business right here. Can you hold on just a second? Is the Planning Commission willing to grant a couple of extra minutes, as we do have two that have been standing in line, willing to speak?
Motion to extend time by two minutes.
I have a motion to extend time by two minutes by Mr. Lowe, and I have a second by Ms. Turnbull. All in favor? Motion carries 601-1. I'm very sorry, but I needed to do that so that we could keep compliant with our rules.
May I understand one statement? All I would like to ask is that each one of you think about your, your home, your subdivision, and would you want this in your, in fund?
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds, and thank you for your patience.
Thank you for granting us a little extra time. My name's David Bradley of the 289 Summer Ridge Drive. My wife and I moved into this property last September. We moved there from Douglas County. We actually moved there and away from Douglas County because it's been so poorly run for many, many years and has completely become trashed. And anyways, I just don't want to see that happen to our area. I'm in the truck rental leasing business, and they are, truck rental is just really a target for crime, as people have mentioned here before. It's something I'm very opposed to, putting this stored facility there, and just don't want to see it happen. I know it'll, not good for, for our neighborhood. Thank you.
Before you get started, sir, there's one minute remaining.
I will be very brief. My name is Greg Kammons. I live in the subdivision as well. I've been there 15 years. I think I heard a number of 64 cars an hour. I would have heard 84. Impact, the vehicle impact? Think about that if that's in your subdivision. It's already horrendous coming in and out with the daycare because it's inside of the gates of our subdivision. It's, it's dangerous. I mean, I've almost been hit numerous times, and I'm sure there are people in here too. Just think about that for a minute. It's not the objection to what they want to do. This is not the place to do it. Quarter mile down the road, there's 20 acres for sale in two or three different places. Go down there. Go away from our subdivision. Thank you.
At this time, we have concluded the time for opposition and concerns. I will ask the applicant if they would like to come back around. You do have some time remaining. And again, whatever comments you may make, you address them to the chair, please.
Thank you again. My name is Ron Cobb. I'm a business partner for Mr. Tommy Graham, who's the principal owner in Alpha Omega Management and the Alpha Omega Storage Facilities. Just to address some of the comments that were made. Number one, there were some comments about the traffic count. The traffic count existing today for the daycare facility is 84 cars maximum per hour. The anticipated impact of the storage facility is four cars per hour. It's basically nil. It's almost too much or too small to measure, so the traffic count is not really an issue. They made a lot of issue about crime. The Alpha Omega One Storage Facility's operated for 17 years in Hiram. The Alpha Omega Two, or Three Facility's operated for 15 years in Powder Springs. The Alpha Omega Four has operated 14 years in Dallas, and the Alpha Omega Five has operated 10 years in Cortersville. It's a total of 56, 56 years of operating experience, and during that time, we've had two incidents that involved break-ins, two. So I know if you watch Channel 5, if you watch what's going on in the caterer and downtown and whatnot, there's a lot of things going on. You'd get the same thing if you were talking about just a, just a gas station somewhere where there's sliders. We don't have that here. We don't run the facilities that way. There was discussion about the existing subdivision sign that's on the east side of Ridgeway Road. We have modified the design so that we do not have to tear that sign down. That sign will remain. It's a brick sign, probably 20 or 30 feet long. However, I would point out that the sign is illegal. The sign is on county property, and so as such, that sign is subject to being torn down at whatever time someone in the county decides that they're going to concentrate on illegal signs. But our design will not tear down the existing sign. Okay? Again, I would also just like to emphasize that the current B1 zoning and the plan that was originally approved when, when it was initially developed called for 16,000 square feet of strip shopping center development and two out parcels, which could be McDonald's, Burger King, or whatever. And it's our contention that a storage facility that's well-run and well-respected, as Alpha Omega Storage is in this area, is a much better neighbor than what I've portrayed to you here with photographs of existing Paulding County strip shopping centers. There was some question about the need for this facility here. We, we have done extensive market studies to determine whether or not this facility was needed. Believe me, if it was not needed, we wouldn't build it. We won't build one just, just so it sits there without people leasing it up. But the market studies that we've done shows that there is a current demand. There's current residences that will support that demand. We know that there's actually some people who live in the shopping center behind us that drive all the way to our facility in Dallas to store their stuff. So it would certainly, for those people, would be certainly more convenient. The other point I want to make is the Alpha Omega, the other facilities that we operate are all operating above 97% capacity. So there is plenty of demand for this in the New Georgia area. I'd like also to have Dan Gania make a statement with regard to the current property owner and the owner of the public shopping center across the street because reference was made in the comments a few minutes ago that that was going to devalue the property and devalue the public shopping center and tax impact, et cetera, et cetera. I'd like Dan Gania as a representative of Halpern Enterprises and the owner of the public shopping center to address that. Thank you.
Just to follow up on what Ron said, we obviously wouldn't be going through with this proposed transaction if we thought it was going to negatively impact our property across the street and the public shopping center. So the value of the public shopping center and the future of that is not even a question here for us. As a matter of fact, the shopping center, as I mentioned earlier, has not lived up to what we initially thought it would do or how it would perform for us. As a matter of fact, we still have a couple of shop spaces in the public shopping center that have never even been rented out since we developed that shopping center over 10 years ago. We just, we've had a lot of turnover with the shops in there that the merchants just haven't had the support. We've tried to attract certain businesses to the shopping center, but we just haven't had the success. My job with Halpern Enterprises for the last 25 years is to, I'm the regional director of leasing for Halpern. I handle half of their portfolio, which consists of over 4 million square feet of retail space. This is our business, and this is what I do for the last 25 years. And unfortunately, I've not been able to attract the types of businesses to this area. There was a comment made earlier that they would like to see another shopping center or some other restaurants. We would too. I mean, honestly, we wouldn't be here today, but we would not even have considered Tommy and Ron's proposal if we had the support of the retail industry and of the community to support these businesses. But as I said, we bought this piece of property, and we had an initial plan for it, and unfortunately, that plan has not come to fruition. So here we are today, and we think this is a good plan for the property. It's a good use. As far as security and crime, again, from operating and leasing over 4 million square feet of space, we have much more crime in our shopping centers than we do in these types of facilities. We have actually owned and operated a facility like this ourselves down in Griffin, Georgia, that never experienced the types of issues that were mentioned earlier. On the other hand, we do experience quite a bit of crime and security and break-ins and things of the sort at our shopping centers, which are not controlled access. Most people think shopping centers are public property. They're actually not public property. They're private property, but the public is allowed to come on to them and shop there. And, and so we do have security. We have police. At a lot of our shopping centers, we've had some, some unfortunate incidents at some of our shopping centers. But again, our shopping centers are not controlled access where I believe this facility would be controlled access. So with that, I'm going to yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Just for record's sake, you have two minutes remaining.
I will be very expeditious. The, to build on Daniel's comment regarding the security, this site will be fully fenced with electronic gate, 24-hour camera and controlled access only. I know that that addresses some of the security concerns. The other thing I wanted to note, that the buffer, as it sits today, if it goes to B2, would go from a B1, which is 25 foot of a buffer on the south side, to 40, again, with the intention of going more than double that on the majority of the south side of the site with the additional plantings. The other thing I want to bring to your attention, staff has reviewed this application and has recommended approval with the stipulations. They also state that the application is in compliance with the 2017 comprehensive plan. And one other thing I'll leave you on as far as tax revenue. Tax revenue from this facility is projected to be $32,000 a year if this, in fact, is granted and moves forward with the commission today. That's it.
Does that conclude all of the comments from presentation?
Unless there's anything you might...
Is there anyone that has a question for the applicant at this time from the Planning Commission?
You have, I believe, two other facilities in Paulding County. Is that correct?
That is correct. They do.
So will architectural design be similar to, do you think be similar to the other two facilities that are in Paulding County?
It will. It'll probably be a step up, just for the fact, I believe, a lot of the facility out here on 278, I can't believe, I can't remember if it was constructed before the corridor overlay. Again, we will comply with that, which is brick facades on the front of buildings, again, and landscaping as well. So it'll probably be a step up from what we're seeing already on 278.
Regarding tenants, do y'all have a screening process that you go through to, with tenants?
I'm going to defer.
As far as the screening process, no, but we gain every bit of information from them we can, and we also know who comes in and out of our gate at all times. We do check our gate activity every single morning. Each person is given a specific gate code with their last name attached to it, so they come in and out of our facility. We know they've been there, and we know what time they left. We are able to check the cameras to see what went on on our facility. We do have gate hours. If you're there after hours, it is considered trespassing, and again, it will not let you in past a certain time as well. So if something happens on our facility at night, we know what's going on.
So when somebody first comes to you and wanted to rent a unit, I guess they fill out an application, is that correct?
Yes. In other words, we get their information from them, but we do reserve the right to reject service from anybody. So if for any reason we feel like this person's suspicious, something doesn't seem right with this person, or for some reason just, we don't think we should rent this space, then we do have the right to deny service.
Right. Do y'all check references?
We do not.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Ren. Is there a possibility that the, during the construction phase, that the access can be off of Rayleigh Road to be closed later?
At this point in time, we've looked at that intersection, and that just does not fit. I know, again, once we get into further design, we can evaluate that, but at this point in time, with what was presented, that just, that access point does not work for us in the site.
Are there any further comments or questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners, any questions? As far as the, the screening or planted screening, I know that we had discussed on the west, excuse me, the east side of the development, that that, since it did not have an access and that was actually bordering Paulding right-of-way, county right-of-way, that it was going to be a landscaped area. Is there any possibility for determining whether or not that could actually be a screened buffer as well?
Are you talking about the east side, or? You're talking about the east side, yes. East side. We'll, we'll likely have to come through and do street trees, so that, that, that side on the eastern end may slip in a little bit, but I'm satisfied we can plant screenings on that, that eastern side. I don't see an issue with that.
Are there any other questions to the applicant? Hearing none. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
At this time, I would ask for a motion with regard to application 2019-11-Z.
Motion to approve with all 10 stipulations.
I have a motion to approve with the 10 listed stipulations from Mr. Lowe. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Aston. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes 5, 1, and 1. And again, that will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners meeting tonight. I know we have another application for the same topic. Mr. Robinson, if you'd like to go ahead and proceed with that. Mr. Robinson, if you'll proceed.
Next application now, also is a part of the prior one. This is a 2019-09 SUP, Special Use Permit. It's application by Alpha Omega Storeall Management LLC for a special use permit on approximately 7.936 acres for self-storage facility, mini warehouse, to include outdoor storage of vehicles, properties located in Landlot 261 District 2, Section 3. It's on the south side of Ridge Road, West Villarica Highway, Commission Post 2. The same opposition as, as the prior one is in, also with this one. Staff has recommended five stipulations. This one is approved. And those are printed in the bag.
I would assume the applicant's present, if you want to come forward.
Again, I'm Ansley Graham. I'm the operations manager at Alpha Omega Storeall, and like you said, this is for the special use facility.
And like you said, this is for the special use permit.
Ms. Graham, you are familiar with the five listed stipulations. Chuck's used to me asking this question, but you're agreeable to those steps?
Yes.
Thank you. Anybody else wants to present?
Again, this is in conjunction with the B1 to B2 zoning for the special use permit for the outside storage, mini warehouse, outside parking. And the exhibit that we used on the previous one is what we're using for this as well. I did want to follow up from a question I think Commissioner Leggett had asked me. Was that relating to construction traffic?
Yes, I was asking about construction traffic.
And I totally flew over my head. So there is a potential that, yes, we could use that for construction for access into the site. And I want to make sure that's okay with the applicant, but that is something we definitely could look into as long as the, as long as the county departments didn't have an issue with that either.
I believe it'd limit the impact of vehicles, delivery vehicles carrying materials in, especially around the, as close to the proximity of that they care.
I don't disagree at all. I don't disagree. So there's not too much more to expand on beyond what we've already talked about. If there's any questions that the commission or the board of commissioners or staff ask for us, we'll be more than glad to answer those with respect to the S U P.
Thank you. Are there any questions to the applicant from the planning commission regarding this Board of Commissioners, any questions? Thank you very much. Mr. Robinson, did you have something?
I just want to make one comment because it was brought up in the prior case. In this S U P application, one of the stipulation number five is that the owner developer agrees the architectural building design standards, including roof, big earth tones, trying to stay away from bright reds and blues, and that it would be consistent to the building facade colors and style of the adjacent public shopping center. So we did add a little more architectural building design standard on this one.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Before we move on to opposition, if you don't mind my indulgence, Mr. Jones, do you think that there would be a willingness on the part of the county, or would it be appropriate to have construction traffic during the development of this site to come in off of Rayleigh Road versus Ridgeway Drive?
I believe this is something we can investigate further, Jody.
And that would be handled in plan review, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here that would wish to speak in opposition to this application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? If you would please come to the lectern, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Yes, Scott Williams again. Resident of Trace Ridge subdivision. The comment being that these developers would have about a $35,000 tax revenue impact on the storage units. That's about six homes. Six homes. You're going to destroy the value of the homes in Trace Ridge for the value of six of these homes. Is that worth it? Six homes they're going to replace. I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak in opposition or may have questions, comments, or concerns? If you want to speak, you'll need to come to the lectern and sign in.
As I said, my name's Derwood Boyd and I'm a 25-year resident in Pauling County and a business owner. When I started my business, I didn't look for areas that were not zoned for my business. I looked for light industrial, heavy industrial, and that's the area I looked to open up and start my business. I don't think that it's right that someone that has, obviously, it's either value in the property versus property that's on already zone B2 or its location. I don't think that they should have the right to completely destroy our environment and our way of living and allow this to be rezoned. I cannot believe that you guys, five to one, are voting for this. It blows my mind. I don't feel protected. I am a voter and I just want to let you guys know that.
Thank you.
When we first heard about it, we, they said no cars, no other types of facilities. Like I said, my experience in the back in the past, our truck was broken into. My storage unit that I'm talking about is across from Walmart two times and got into my unit. So, and then you're opening up everything because literally there are no trees where I am and they're all trees that are going to be taken down. Are you going, are you guys saying you're going to take the trees down and leave the sign or what?
Ms. Reynolds, you'll direct your comments to me.
Okay.
You are Ms. Reynolds, right? You didn't state your name and I think I had it down, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
They were talking about trees, but there's nothing back there. Are they going to put saplings that have years to grow? Are they going to put back full trees to hide off?
Would you do me a favor? While you're there, if you'll look to your right, or Chris, if you'll help her, please indicate along this screen here where your property is located so that I'll have a better understanding.
I'm the house right behind everything.
Right there. Got it. So they're going to have a 40-foot undisturbed buffer, meaning they're not going to go into the trees that are between the back of your yard or the side of your yard, depending on where you are, and the back of their property line. And in addition to that, the stormwater ponds that they have to build to contain stormwater drainage is also going to have additional landscape trees planted as well. So whatever is currently existing there, and please, Mr. Rand, when you come back up or Mr. Robinson, if you want to correct me, that is going to remain undisturbed as it exists today.
There's not very much left there because most of it's been cleared. And are you guys going to be putting saplings in there? Are you going to be pulling full-grown trees that will not show us? Mr. Halpern and I had an issue before that could never be...
All right.
...satisfied about my property and the water coming over on it. And I contacted him multiple times, had pictures of it, the whole nine yards. But I just don't want to be left exposed because you're taking down everything.
The clearing that you're speaking of?
Mm-hmm.
When they cleared that, that was prior to this development wanting to come in? This was with the previous owner or the current owner?
Mr. Halpern.
Mr. Halpern?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understand the timeline.
Yes.
Please continue.
But I just want a commitment, if y'all can't see your way, not to let them in here, is that you put trees up now that they cannot see through. I don't want saplings that we have to wait for years to get through. We worked on our trees and I have eight trees in our decorative wall and, you know, things like that. You're racking up right to it. There's nothing, there are very few trees in there. There are not, what they were calling 50 trees, they may be 50 saplings, but there are not 50 grown trees that will block the view into Publix. You know, so, like I said, I have pictures, but I don't have time to bring them up on the phone.
You're welcome to, they're on your phone?
Mm-hmm. Where you can see stuff, where you can see through different seasons.
If you wish to show the pictures, you're welcome to bring them up.
Let me see how long it'll take me to get them.
I'm Jimmy Driscoll. I live in Trace Ridge at 128 Summer Ridge Drive. I'd like to see the study on it being 84 cars per hour coming into our subdivision. That's over 640 cars a day. You realize how many that would be? That has to go all the way in to a cul-de-sac on each end of our drive. That's a lot of traffic and I don't believe it. And to move into a nice subdivision like this and put a storage unit out there that's going to have that many buildings in front of our, really upsets me bad. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Riddles is complaining about the undisturbed buffer zone 40 feet deep across that, those existing properties. Those are deciduous trees. In winter time, it's like looking right out here. What she's got on one side is Leyland cypress that are green year-round. So if you go against us, please put up some kind of evergreen tree, a holly or a cypress that will block that view into that property. We'd just like to keep our aesthetics. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would wish to speak in opposition or may have questions, comments, or concerns regarding this application? If you would please sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Hi, I'm Joan Driscoll. I live in Trace Ridge subdivision. That was my father. I've been a resident there for 14 years. When we purchased our house there, we purchased it for long-term, planning on retiring there because it was a good area, safe area, nice neighborhood, worked hard, saved up our money, bought in a nice neighborhood. When real estate agents list those houses for sale now, they always use the word prestigious, executives, highly sought-after neighborhood. You've just really, if you've changed in the zoning, you've just taken all that away. So now, what are they going to list? Oh, the neighborhood behind the storage unit, turn left at the U-Hauls. Gee, guys, you know, thanks a lot. I've got friends who've looked in the neighborhood, but of course now they've stopped because they don't want to live behind a storage unit. It's really upsetting to know that you guys have that power and you just did that to us. So hopefully tonight, we can talk to our commissioners, have a little bit different discussion, and save our area and the community, and let's try to put something there worthwhile that the 614 people that signed the petition would like. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nisa Panner. I'm a resident of Trace Ridge. We've been there for about 12 years and let me tell you, we went in there after the meltdown, the economy meltdown, and it has not been easy for us to even pay our property taxes because they're so high. But we've been able to keep, hold on to it. And we're getting to retirement age. And now, you know, our equity in our home, that's part of our retirement because we're that handful that, you know, prospered in Paulding County, but then the rug was pulled out from under. We've got new careers now, re-entered ourselves, you know, into the workplace, but it still has not been easy to hold on to our home. And for you guys to come in here and do this, it's just not right. I'm a lifetime resident, me and my husband both, and we've been on both ends of this and this is just not right. And I just ask that you would please consider the detriment that it's going to have on our homes. This is our livelihood. This is our home. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak in opposition or may have questions, comments, or concerns? There's a couple of minutes remaining. If y'all will bear with us for a moment, I'm going to put things on hold while we look at the pictures.
That's my property, Pauling Blue, you see out there, it's their property. I'm showing you plenty of my Christmas lights. That's right here. This is mine. You see what little trees there are? I'm actually in my house. That's it. That's why I like food. And then, you know, to Christmas. I appreciate you taking time. I find the lights and things come out, like you can see, my house, and your boy looking out to the side. And you can see straight out my backyard, you can see on the sidewalk, and you can see Publix, like I said, three quarters of a year on my property. There is nobody, lots of that here, except what's little lion house.
That's all right.
If you would like to, don't just show me, if you would like to show the entire planning
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. We have just a couple of minutes remaining. Was there anyone else that wished to speak in opposition?
I would just like to, first of all, understand the process. We've, you guys have already voted on whether to approve or not approve this. Why are we doing this?
This is a two-part process. Whenever you're going to locate a warehouse, storage warehouse, self-storage warehouse in a location that is not an industrially-zoned location, it's going to have to go into a B2 location and must have a special use permit in accompaniment with it. So it's a two-phase process.
So this is for the special?
Special use...
Use permit.
Permit. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition? Hearing none, there was time remaining for the applicant, if you would like to come back
I believe there were, I think, three comments that I overheard. One was in relation to the sign. The applicant has no, no plans to do anything with the existing sign for the subdivision. The second one involved the trees and more specifically, the trees on the southwest corner. We will extend additional plantings. If that, if that buffer area is determined in plan review to be substantially devoid of trees, then we will supplement plant. The comment that we... The comment that was made about the deciduous trees versus an evergreen tree, definitely on our mind. And again, we would... That's the only trees that we're likely to go back up, especially on that south side, is something to screen that. Now, again, what the size of those trees are, they'll meet the intent of the zoning ordinance, but I imagine it'll be a six-to-eight-foot tree. I can't remember. It'd be a Leland or some type of cypress tree. But it'd be an evergreen tree. And the last... The last comment was traffic study. The traffic study was submitted. It was a capacity analysis evaluation. Was submitted with application, has been reviewed by Polk County DOT. And is on file.
Yes, again, Ron Cobb, just amplified. One of the people who spoke recently, I think, had misinterpreted the traffic study numbers. The traffic study numbers were not that there is a continuous eighty-four cars per hour. That's not... That is a peak maximum hour. It's eighty-four cars per hour. And that was not for the subdivision, but for the daycare center. And again, our estimated peak use adds four cars to that, which would be the additional burden that we're adding to Ridge Road in this case. Just to be a little more clear in regard to the current plantings, if you can... I don't know if you can see this or not, but these existing trees here, they are here now. Those will not be disturbed. There are a few trees that are here that will be taken out. These are completely new plantings that are not required, as I understand, by zoning, but which we had offered in order to shield the property from the neighbors who live behind us. Just a clarification. Thank you.
If you would start down here at Mr. Aston with that picture and then just walk this way with it. Please pardon me, Mr. Cobb.
Could she put that phone underneath the screen so we could all see what she's...
Will that work? Ms. Reynolds? Would you take that picture down to Mr. Robinson and let him set it on the overhead? Okay.
Could you... Can we ask exactly what this... That picture was and from where it was shot?
My backyard.
In relation to the site plan, Ms. Reynolds? Right here. In relation to the site plan that was there, could you show him where that picture was taken?
Here's my county. And this is where you can see a backyard.
If you will point.
There's the subdivision.
This right here is the backyard yard. And so yours' picture is this. I'm gonna use a pen, but...
That's my backyard.
That's coming... That's out of your backyard, looking across this property to the place. Does that help?
Yeah, it does.
And there's one more.
All right. Are we looking at another picture?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I have another question for Mr. Rand. As far as the... Chuck? As far as the topo of this property, is it on the same level as the subdivision? Or is it lower than the subdivision?
The subdivision's actually lower than our site. And when the initial development occurred on the public site, this particular parcel was used as a borrow area. So dirt was taken from this site and exported across the street in support of the publics. So... But it is still higher than the subdivision in general.
I guess my only point would be that I believe that the screening that we've committed to will screen the... From the pictures here, so she won't be able to see across that street.
Okay. Okay. Did the applicant have any further comment? Are there any questions to the applicant from the planning commission? Board of Commissioners, any questions to the applicant at this time?
Do you understand the pictures on the easel? Are those examples of other commercial buildings that would qualify when you're being building?
Those were pictures that were taken of the back of shopping centers in Polk County, one of which is right across the street. Just to show by example for what can be built on this site without any further public input. So the residents... The residents could be looking at that. If it's driven out and someone did come in to develop a commercial layer, this could be what they're looking at and they would have no opportunity, as I understand it, under current zoning because it's already approved. And this would be what they have. And I show that really to try to give an example of what we're proposing. Should be a lot less impact to what's visual and the sound or everything about a storage facility. It's one of the most lowest-impact developments you can make. So that was the reason. That was just to give an example of what it could be if it's built as a... And if that was the case, that would be the development without any further public input.
Any other questions from Board of Commissioners to the applicant? Any questions to the staff from the planning commission? Board of Commissioners? At this time, I will entertain a motion on application 2019-09-SUP.
Motion to approve with written stipulations.
Of a motion to approve with the five listed stipulations from Mr. Lowe. Is there a second? Now, a second from Mr. Aston. All in favor? Motion passes six, zero, and one. Again, these applications will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners meeting tonight for consideration at seven o'clock. The applicant is required to be present for it to be considered. Anyone else having an interest should be present. At this time, I'm gonna ask for a couple of minutes recess for a bathroom break, if you don't mind.
Thank you, sir.
And we're back. Again, please make sure that all mobile devices are turned to silence or off so that it doesn't interrupt the proceedings. And at this time, Mr. Robinson, is the applicant ready to go?
Yes. Next application, 2019-12Z, application by Piedmont Residential LLC to resound approximately 69.6 acres from light industrial to low density quality residential development district for the development of a single-family residential subdivision, approximately through maximum of 113 single-family lots with public streets. Property is located in landlots 1205, 1206, 1243, 1244, 1245, and 1277. It's in District 2, Section -- District 3, Section 3, east side of Oak County Farm Road, and it's north of Industrial Boulevard North. It's located in Commission Post 4. We have had some calls and questions of concern from property owners, and staff has recommended approval with nine stipulations. And at this time, there is one stipulation that should have been added on there, and an applicant is agreeable to it, I do know. It's just that the owner developer would agree to extend any sewer service to the north property line that could provide service to Moses Middle School.
Say that again, extend sewer?
Owner developer agrees to extend service, and Laurie, help me if I'm saying that a little that they extend the service, sewer service, to the northern property line to provide possible access to Moses Middle School. That would be stipulation number 10.
Number 10?
Yes, sir.
I don't do shorthand well, so...
And at this moment, I'd also like to point out that there was a little bit of adjustment. It's already printed. It's in the printed copy, but stipulation number five was edited to last, early last part of last week. The owner developer agrees that roadway entrance improvements or other improvements shall be determined during the plan review process based on traffic study. An applicant is present.
The applicant will please come around, sign in, state your name and address your comments to the chair.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Miller. I'm with Piedmont Residential, the applicant. As stated, this is a rezoning from light industrial to residential. While the zoning category that we're requesting would allow 2.5 units to the acre, our site plan is actually, and we anticipate, an actual density of 1.6 units to the acre. This property is located between Moses Middle School and Industrial. It's bordered on the south, or as you can see, there's a creek that runs through it, but that creek crosses Old County Farm Road, which kind of creates a natural separation from the industrial. It's directly across the street from Brookside Subdivision, which we were building in. That subdivision has a density of 2.5. Again, what we're looking at is 1.6 units to the acre. The only other thing I would add, I'll be glad to answer any questions. I'll try to brief. It's been a long afternoon already. But on that final zoning condition related to sewer, I would just like to make sure that whatever wording that that condition ends up anticipates the idea that the school might actually expand before we build. I don't, I have no idea exactly what the school's plans are, but I don't want to end up with a condition where we are required to build a sewer line. We'd be glad to grant the easement. If we're building, we will extend it, but if it's a situation where, you know, they decide to expand, and we're still a year and a half or two years down the road, you know, we'll grant the easement, but I, does that make, hopefully that makes some sense, but...
It does, and I'll ask you to pause your comments right there.
Yes.
It does, however capturing that essence, I don't know is going to be easy to do. Laurie, do you want to weigh in on this?
At the end of the stipulation, we could add, of course, that they agree to extend the service service to the northern property line as for access to, possible access to Moses Middle School, and that this would be at the time of the construction of the subdivision or development.
If needed?
If, if necessary. Or needed. That way it puts it on their timetable and doesn't hold a screw.
Mr. Phillips, are you okay with that "if" in that sentence?
Not yet. At the time of the construction of the development is that, and we said "if needed," who is going to determine if it's needed?
That's a good question.
Okay, so, let's see. It would appear then that it should read that they are agreeable to extend sewer service to the north property line from Moses, to service Moses Middle School at the time of development construction. I would want to make sure the applicant's agreeable to that.
We do agree with that, and in addition to that, we would agree to grant an easement for the school board to run sewer if the school board's ready for sewer before we do the development.
Can I say something? May I help out? I've actually reached out to the school system and talked about this. They have an expansion on Moses Middle School that's set to be open in fall of 2022, if that helps out.
And my reaction to that would be while we have, hopefully, we would have the need to begin this development before that. We all know things can change, and I just want to make sure the language doesn't create upon us a requirement to extend the sewer line in 2022 if we're not developing. But we would certainly grant the easement and allow the school to come across the property to attach to the sewer line. And I apologize for my voice, by the way.
Try it, try it again here. That the applicant is agreeable to extending sewer service to the north property line for to serve Moses Middle School at the time it commences construction of the development. In the event that the Paulding County School District desires to serve, desires to provide sewer to Moses Middle School prior to the construction of the development by the applicant, the applicant is agreeable to granting an easement to the Paulding County School District.
I understood what you read, but I did not write it down.
I've got bits and pieces here.
Chances are, the motion is going to be, if it's voted on to approve, what he said.
That'll work.
Not to prejudice the decision of the board, but if it does move forward with approval.
And the applicant would agree with that.
All right. Mr. Miller, if you would please continue. I'm sorry for the break.
I'm done. I would be glad to, well, just a quick question will probably come up. We would expect these homes to be the same as what's across the street, both in size, architecture, pricing, and whatnot, hopefully with some appreciation in home values before then.
Are there any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission?
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
You haven't talked with the school system as to the crowdedness and the overcrowded of the schools?
We have not, we have not, I've not had a direct conversation. I understand, as was mentioned, that the school, the school board does expect to expand that. We've also had some conversations about the timing of this. As of right now, we would expect homes in this neighborhood to come to the market, you know, late 2021. But we, we would be open to, you know, maybe agreeing to extend that, you know, some period of time so it doesn't you know, add to that, and would tie into the timing of the projected expansion of Moses.
The schools are overcrowded now, from what I understand, both Moses and Abney. You're going to build 1.6 homes per acre, which my math's not great, but that figures out somewhere around 210 homes.
No, it's 113.
Okay, 113.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I messed away all the time. There's 2.5 roughly kids to every house though. So that's going to bring in another three, 250 kids or better to an overcrowded situation that we have now in the schools.
I am fortunate I do not have the stats on Across the Street at Brookside, but I, just my own knowledge of driving through there, I just, I don't, I don't see that number, but I'm not going to stand here and tell you that that number is wrong. I'm not sure what your source for that is, but I would, I just, I'm not sure I see that.
I think 2.5 kids per house though is normal average for homes. That's what we used to figure when we were, when I was in school.
Yeah, unfortunately, you know, birth rates are down, so, but I, I'm not going to argue that number. I don't know.
Are there any other? Yeah. Yes, sir.
There was information that was provided by the school system that they had, they had this, this information and the recommended development, uh, number of units, and they based, they project from this development that there would be an increase of 37 students at East Paulding High School, 26 at Moses Middle School, and 50 at Abney Elementary. This is from the school system.
All right. Are there any other questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission?
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Chris, actually to you. Is the number that you gave us, the 37, 28, and, oh, sorry, 26 and 50, is that inclusive of the numbers that are figured in like the 21, 22 projections? Are they, are they included in those numbers, or are those numbers in addition to those numbers? Does that, am I making sense?
Yes, you're making very good sense. I, I don't, I don't have an answer for that.
Okay.
I don't know if the school system included them in, or they're just saying that, that that right there is what they're projecting already anyway.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I'm thinking that's what it is, and then the projected impact is in addition of these number of students. That's what I'm thinking. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission?
I'd like to reserve my time for any of them.
Just a moment. Are there any questions from the Board of Commissioners to the applicant?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I can.
By extending the time to line up more with the Moses addition, what timeframe are you talking that you might could extend that to?
Based on what we have across the road, I would think we could agree to delaying the receipt of an LDP until July of next year. So if we got an LDP in July, assume 10 months to develop, in a best-case scenario, you're in, then you're into the second quarter of 21. 21. You build houses, so, you know, the first students out of that subdivision, based on that timeline, would not be showing up in schools until the 21, 22 school year. So that gives, as we sit here now, that gives the school board two years to deal with whatever needs to be dealt with.
Are there any other questions?
I'd be, we'd be willing to agree to a stipulation to that if that would, if that would be entertained or requested.
Mr. Stover, is that something that you're interested in?
Yes, sir.
So stipulation addressing issuance of the LDP? Again, I think we're going to need to craft that statement.
And those figures that's showing on the sheet that says here only one student per lot, I don't think that's really an accurate figure either because of the...
Okay. Do you have a concession that you're wanting to make or have considered as far as a stipulation to be added?
Perhaps a simple wording would be no, the stipulation is that no land disturbance permit shall be granted on this project until or before July 1, 2020.
A year.
Excuse me?
A year, in other words.
Right.
July 2020. Are we waiting on anything else, or is that statement?
Mr. Chairman, if I check with Commissioner Stover to make sure that captures his concern when he's...
Mr. Stover? Could you lean into the mic, please? I'm sorry, I can't hear you now.
Yeah, I was just trying to prolong the construction date to go along with the addition at Moses Elementary.
Would that statement reflect your desire?
Yes, sir.
Just to be clear, the applicant is agreeable that he will not seek issuance of a land disturbance permit until July 1, 2020?
Correct, but just for the record, we will, that the land disturbance permit would not be issued before July 1. Obviously, we would submit, we might submit the application before then because it takes some period of time, but that the permit will not be issued before July.
All right. No land disturbance permit will be granted prior to July 1, 2020?
Thank you very much. That would be stipulation number 11 for all you keeping count. Any other questions from the Board of Commissioners? Mr. Carmichael?
Is this for Mr. Miller? Test.
Your own.
Yeah, what, what is the price point?
I believe those homes are currently selling, I could look it up on the website, but I think they're in the high 200s, like 250 to 280 right now. But I can look that up on the website, and I'll have that answer for you in a moment.
Okay, thank you.
The current listings on our website for Across the Street are 253, 246, 281. And those are the three that are just popping up on the, on the front of website right now. And I apologize, that's not my area, and so I don't have those numbers in my head.
No, that's fine. I've got one other question. I guess you'd lose some buildable acres because of the stream through there. I did the math, and it, it came out that you'd have a house on every .62 acres.
That, yes, there, we are staying, absolutely staying outside of the stream buffers, and those are not, those are not within the lots. Is that correct, Mr. Engineer?
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Board of Commissioners?
Did you already go past the Planning Commission questions?
Yes, we've done one round of that. We may come back around again.
I think I was too slow. I had a question just on the zoning, the current I-1 zoning. And I think the Board of Commissioners is very excited about I-1 zoning and the potential there for light industry and more commercialization. So nobody's mentioned that in the conversation, that we're going to lose that to go residential.
Would you like to take that somewhere else, or?
I just want to point it out that...
Duly noted.
That was one of my concerns.
May I speak to that just a moment?
Yes, sir.
As you'll notice from the site plan, there is a significant creek running through the middle of the property, and there is rock on this property. We, as best we know where it is, we've tried to design around it, but I would say that those elements and the topo on it as a practical matter probably make this not the most desirable industrial site. And again, I would point out that, you know, you've got the bridge right there and the creek crossing, and so perhaps inviting industrial traffic across that, you know, in the long run may not, there may be a benefit to that not happening as well, but the site itself, given its natural features, do not make it a very desirable industrial site, which is most likely why it's never transacted for that.
Are there any other questions from the Board of Commissioners to the applicant? Planning Commission, any questions to the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Miller. Is there anyone else here that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone that is in opposition to this application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? If you would please come to the lectern, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Hi, I'm Sharon Gunzer. My husband and I have lived at, well, adjacent to that property for about 36 and a half years. When we moved there, Reuben Jones owned that land, and it was timberland, and he, every 10, 15, 20 years, however, they came and, and cut the trees down, and we're used to living out in the middle of nowhere, and eventually more houses have come up. We even have a pit bull rescue to the opposite side of us now. So I'm not opposed to the subdivision. I think it would be an absolutely stunning subdivision because of the creek, the lay of the land, and with it comes certain possibilities for detriment to us and our land. We've experienced years of runoff and privacy issues from Silver Oaks subdivision, which is across Gerald Road, which is to the right of that property. And in fact, that's our lake at the, at the bottom right of the screen. That's our lake. From when this picture was taken, the lake is muddy from that development. It got halted in 2008 because of the economy, but Silver Oaks started again probably 2014, 2015, and it's intermittently muddied like that from the runoff. And so when I heard subdivision going in, the first thing in my mind is my lake is going to be muddy again. There are several areas of concern of drainage coming onto our land, and one is I have the lot numbers referenced, or on the, the main concern is where our lake is. It'd be right here at this corner. Yeah, that's the first and major area of concern. All that property is very hilly, and our property line is, we live right here, so we're going to have two sides of the subdivision next to us, and this particular area right here, the lay of the land slopes down, and it feeds into another neighbor's property, which has a spring on it, and that spring feeds our lake. It comes into our lake, and it's fed by multiple streams, but that's one. So there is a propensity for it to muddy our lake again. The second area of concern is right, right in here where the two landlots meet. The property is extremely hilly right there. It goes into a valley, and then it comes back up on our side, and so it gets the runoff, and it feeds to the left, it goes, it goes this way onto our property, and it... and it feeds to the left, it goes, it goes this way onto our property and it hooks up with another spring on our land, which feeds into our creek, which is not shown on this property, on, on this map, but it roughly goes right through here and comes around here. Our lake is in this area and the dam is there and then the creek comes around through here. And so it meets up with the discharge from the lake and that's gonna be an issue as well because of the lay of the land. And the third and final place is right here on the end of the property. You can see it goes into the water basin area. So it starts high and then it goes down low into the basin and depending on the lay of the land, there's another possibility of it going straight into our creek because our creek runs along that bottom right there. And so those, because of the issues we've been experiencing for years from the other subdivisions, those are of great importance to me and I just see it as, as a problem, potential problem. The other thing is with all that crazy valleys and hills and everything, we have a well that is right in this area, our house well. And Ms. Joyce, my neighbor who was not able to make it today, her property, this is her house and her well sits right here as well, but I don't know if the lay of the land is gonna cause it problems, but with ours, we already have issues with sediment being on a well, so that's, that's another concern. And then privacy issues. My neighbor and others have had problems with trespassing. Most of the time, it seems to be juveniles, but they do come across into this area right here. In fact, there's homeless people living there and during the night we hear shotguns go off and it's a concern for potential, more potential trespassing. And so in, in reading the staff comments, it says that the comprehensive plan also recommends changes to development patterns for subdivision development in this area. These changes may include but are not limited to larger residential lots, no masquerading, preservation of severe slope streams, and environmentally sensitive locations, and I agree 100% with those statements after living on this land. And I couldn't get more specific information from the office on what it means, but for what it means to me and what I'm asking for, special consideration being is that the subdivision would provide either privacy fencing or screening along our two sides of property line, and Ms. Joyce has also asked me to represent her with that as well. That would impede trespassing. We have an orchard in the back and we have personal belongings all over our property. And on the, the plan, it shows that there is a 25-foot undisturbed buffer and we're requesting that either that buffer be increased another 25 feet to help prevent the storm drainage and sediment, et cetera, from coming onto our land, or at least leave 25 of mature vegetation on the rear side of those lots there. So it'd be a 50-foot buffer, but only 25 would be undisturbed and then the rest would be up to the homeowner. And then also, like I said, the concern, it kept, I want it on record that there is the existing concern of dirty water coming into our well, our springs, our lake, and our creek. And then the other issue, we're trying to keep it, we would love to keep it as rural as possible, like when we first moved there, and the pit bull rescue on the other side of us has lights that are just bombarding because he comes out during the night and those lights are shining right at us, and so I'm thinking at, at nighttime, if there's streetlights or security lights, they're gonna be shining at us from the other side. So I would also ask that the lights be prohibited from facing our direction. So those are my concerns and comments, and I appreciate your consideration.
Gunter, before you, you take your seat, and thank you for your comments, have you ever made a call to the county regarding the discharge of water from the properties you're talking about, the ones in existence now? Have you ever called?
Not only have we spoken and emailed with the county, and John Bloomfield is the owner of the, of most of the lake. We own only a small piece, and he has been in contact with the county, the builder and developer, and we have been in contact with the EPD.
Okay. I just wanted to note.
Okay.
Sir, do you wish to speak?
Yes, I'm Ken Gunner, I'm Sharon's husband, and back when they were doing the other subdivision, there was two or three times that we would call the state partner, state partner come out and shut the job down for quite a few weeks while they were doing this. And with other subdivisions, because it did, it filled our, the lake full of mud where it stocked up the overflow. And, but I guess, like I said, I'll speak on their behalf as far as I'd rather have a subdivision than industrial park there. And I know, I know from back when the man that used to own the property beforehand and the county came out and they drilled for rock to, just to check before the county bought the property, because the county owned the property. And it was solid rock. So, I mean, we know for the fact there that, you know, that's, that's what it's gonna be like, but I guess from our standpoint, we have 14 acres there, which goes all the way down two sides of this property, and we see what the kids, mainly those kids from the other subdivision are doing to Ms. Joyce, which is at the end of the road, because she hasn't, they have a trail going through her backyard now, and she's caught them camping out underneath her back deck. And just because, and you're talking about 250 kids in this subdivision, we're gonna be basically the only open piece of land and coming down to the swamp and the creek. So, you know, we're gonna have them encroaching across our property plus our equipment and stuff we have there at our house. And so that's why we were just asking about privacy fence down our property, just to help keep those, them from coming over and somebody getting injured or whatever might happen there.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gunner.
Hey, Jody.
Yes, Mr. Stover.
Comment, Dave, I was talking to Dave earlier whenever he was talking about the light industrial. The reason it's light industrial is Georgia Heritage during the recession, it actually went, I think, from too light industrial to change the zoning classification, which would put it at a different bracket because residential zoning during the crash was worth zero, so they actually, I think, for that portfolio for the bank changed it to light industrial.
Erosed by any other name?
Sir.
They renamed it to make it valuable?
Yeah.
All right. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak in opposition or may have questions, comments, or concerns regarding this application? Hearing none. Mr. Miller, would you like to come back to the lectern?
Just a couple of real quick comments. We, of course, would comply with, you know, every sediment erosion control ordinance there is, which have been dramatically increased since that last subdivision was first built. We'd be willing, you know, with the permission of those that own the lake to do a sediment study of that lake before we start and then, again, afterwards and remediate anything that could be attributed to our activity. As for the rural character, I would point out the Brookside lots, which are across the street, are 65-foot lots. These are 80-foot lots as required by the ordinance, so these are actually bigger lots than what's across the street, although we would be building, you know, a similar product. And then, as you mentioned, the, talked about certain changes, including but not limited larger residential lots, no masquerading, et cetera. That's item F under the comments, and it actually says that staff, the staff's opinion is that this plan is consistent with that, with that, those desires, so I just wanted to make those comments.
There were also a couple of comments made regarding fencing and screening along the property lines, adjacent to their properties. Is that something that you would be considering?
I would say that, you know, there's a current stipulation about landscaping. Actually, stipulation number one, submit detailed landscaping plans prepared by a registered design professional. We could certainly look at incorporating, you know, some screening into that landscape plan. The idea of agreeing to a privacy fence along our entire border and boundary, I think, is a tremendous amount and request. That would have just an incredible economic, detrimental economic, economic impact. Also, you've got an undisturbed buffer there, so if you, you know, where are you gonna put your fence? At the edge of the buffer and now you've got a 25-foot, you know, no man's land behind somebody's fence, so I would, I wouldn't be real quick to agree to a, a privacy fence along, you know, 1,300 feet on one side and I don't know how long it is on the other, but we could certainly look at the landscaping aspect of it and screening.
Regarding the streetlights, and this may be more a staff question as far as requirements for street lighting, are you planning on providing street lighting in the subdivision?
Yeah, we were, we were required to.
And will it be shielded lighting? I believe that would be...
There's design that requires the lighting to go down and, you know, there will of course be houses between the streetlights and, and the adjoining properties.
Okay.
And then I would say, you know, our, our main goal is to cure the homelessness process, problems, so I, I know exactly where that camp is and, you know, so...
And I'm not glossing over for Mr. and Mrs. Gunner's sake, I'm not glossing over the idea of the stormwater quality control that you're talking about as far as runoff. I will say this, this is a different day and age than what took place across the street with that particular development. There are higher levels of control in place that the county ensures and they have access to tools they have to make sure that compliance is adhered to, and if you have a reputable builder that is doing this, they're gonna comply with it as well because it ends up being not just a local county issue, it does become a state issue as well. So I, it'll go through plan review. We don't really handle how the water's gonna run here with this board, but plan review will have all of your engineers sitting around a table talking about the development with his professionals, as well as Mr. Miller's himself, about what they're gonna do to lessen the impact of their development on neighboring properties. So that will be addressed. Are there any other questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners, any questions? Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from the Planning Commission to the staff regarding this application?
I have a question for somebody. We don't have a school board representative here, but in these cases where it's projected that the schools are actually overloaded with students from a future development, does the school board monitor these things and try to remedy the situation before, say, the students show up for school? Because I know, I believe Mr. Stover stated Moses, Moses is, has a future expansion project, so what about adding it? It's overloaded too, in fact, it's worse than Moses, and I was just curious how that dealt with.
I want to go back and, and community development has a good rapport with the school system on talking about future growth. Matter of fact, we have a meeting with the school system superintendents on Friday regarding future growth. We have reached out with the school system to be more interactive with this zoning process as there's, is some, one of the standards in the zoning procedures that would require us to require impacts on schools, and so we really are reaching out to them and look at those impacts on these type developments.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners? At this time, I will entertain a motion with regard to application 2019-12-Z. And please keep in mind, before you make the motion, there are currently nine printed stipulations, and then you have the two potential added stipulations, number 10 and number 11. The number 10 crafted by Mr. Phillips, thank you, and then number 11 to be no LDP to be granted prior to July 1, 2020. The number 10 was owner developer agrees to extend sewer service to the northern property line to provide future service, sewer service to Moses Middle School at the time of it commences development, construction, or construction development. Did I get that correct with the...
Would you like me to restate it?
Please state that again, yeah, with the, with the easement.
All right. Stipulation 10 is applicant will extend sewer service at applicant's expense to the north property line of the parcel for the benefit of the Moses Middle School facility upon the commencement of construction of the development by applicant. In the event the Pauline County School District seeks to construct a sewer line through the parcel prior to applicant's commencement of construction, applicant will grant a sewer slash utility easement to the Pauline County School District for that purpose without cost to the school district.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. So at this time, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the 11 stipulations.
I have a motion to approve with the 11 stipulations by Mr. Lowe. I have a second from Ms. Turnbill. All in favor? All opposed? So we have a 3, 3, as I count them, 3 for, 3 against, and I guess at this point I would break the tie. I will vote in favor of the development. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn by Mr. Lowe.
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Leggett. All in favor?
Agreed.
Motion passes 6, 0, and 1. Thank you for your time today. Again, this application will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners meeting tonight at 7:00. Applicant must be present, and if you have an interest, you need to be present.